All right, this is the work session of the River Edge Mayor and Council for April 16, 2012. It's now seven o'clock. We're going to dispense with the reading of the Open Public Meetings Act until the eight o'clock meeting. We're going to go right into presentations that we have. The first one from, I know we're going to do roll call. First one we're going to do from Capitol Alternatives, and then we'll hear from Mr. Duke from the YMCA, and then we'll go back to the regular agenda. Denise, can I have a roll call?
Captain Lou Murphy?
Here.
Captain Corcoran?
Here.
Captain Lurie?
Here.
Captain Calabale?
Here.
And Mayor McCarroll.
Here.
All right, we have Capitol Alternatives here. Come on up, sit at the table. We also have, I saw Mr. Costa here a minute ago.
Making copies, Mayor.
Making copies, okay.
First of all, I want to say thank you for having taken us. Thank you for the vote of confidence, and we're here tonight to hopefully show you now what we can do. In discussions over the last two weeks with your borough engineer and your mayor, we wanted to get a feel for what sort of things that you need grants for. Several of the things that Rob Costa explained to us are things that we think we can address for you now. The first one is number five on the presentation we just handed you. Rob explained to us that you have a drainage problem, which he calls the Oak Avenue Drainage Project. And I don't know if this is something that you've sought grants for in the past, or something you were planning on funding yourself. However, I'm going to tell you, don't. We can file an application for you right now for a grant from the Department of Transportation from Special Pocket for discretionary applications for drainage problems. The application must be submitted before the end of this month, and we will hear within the next 90 days whether it's been successful. So, in anticipation that hopefully you would agree with my recommendation, we've provided a resolution for the application to Denise for tonight. Hopefully, you'll consider voting upon it. The grant that we're going to seek will be for 100 percent of the construction cost. There is no match. What you have to provide is the design engineering for the project. The grant, if we're lucky to get the full amount, will also include your engineer's construction inspection fees as well. So, that's the first project that I would like to offer to you tonight.
Marlene Letcher, let me stop you right here for pause. Let's just ask Rob Costa or engineer who's present to comment on that application, what the scope of it is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Oak Avenue ditch really is the Voorhees Avenue. I remember the residents rough here months ago with issues from advocates who were subconjoining them numerous times. Currently, I'm just finalizing the plans for designing what to bid. I would say by the end of this week, the plans will be finalized and a big specification package will be available. Now again, this would be basically what we call shovel-ready, that it should then get hooked into the grant, and there it gets fitted, and maybe this makes sense.
All right, so this would entail just a very short delay of like awarding the grant for the money that we already set aside in our capital bond, right? Until we get an answer from the DOT.
Well, as I explained to Rob when we spoke, once we file the application, it gets scored.
Okay.
And we will know if it makes enough of a score to get money. I will call the DOT and hopefully be able to ascertain that information. If they tell us it's going to be funded, I don't think that the delay is going to bother you at all.
All right, now...
You can take the money that you've set aside for it and use it for something else.
Other than the engineering plans that are practically done already, what else do you need from us?
Nothing. The resolution.
Do you need any photographs depicting the damage?
Well, I would talk to Rob to see if he could get any photographs of the flooding, and although he didn't have any, he thought he might be able to get some.
Yeah, I think the residents actually provided to us the subconvention.
All right, anyone on council have any questions regarding this particular? Go ahead.
This is, you're going to apply this for discretionary aid? Is it discretionary aid project?
This is not discretionary aid, discretionary DOT fund.
Yes, discretionary from DOT.
Yes.
And what was the estimate, Rob?
I asked Alan for the $100,000 at this juncture.
And what would you expect the inspection fees to be?
If we're going to do this, let's go for the best. I was going to put two large inlets in Voorhees, try to open that pipe up, and then I have two other pipes to try to correct some of the issues that are going on inside. I would say at least $100,000, $150,000 is due, you know, try to get everything.
And then you'll put your inspection fees on that also?
Yeah, I'll put together an estimate, and I'll give it to you tomorrow morning, or tomorrow afternoon.
Fine.
Tom, do the Voorhees Avenue residents have any photographs or anything?
They do. They have a lot of documentation they'd be glad to share. I can certainly reach out to them unless Alan wants to and get them to get that out to you.
Johnny.
Oh, I thought we were also going to maybe go for a DOT grant for Fifth Avenue?
Yeah.
Two different categories.
We didn't get to that one yet.
I know, but does this affect us?
Not at all.
Doesn't affect us as far as that?
When the regular DOT round is announced for municipal road aid, there are four categories, and most people aren't aware of that.
Okay.
So, the different categories do not compete with each other at all. You could actually do an application in each category and have more funding.
All right, any other questions?
That's listed, by the way, Councilman, as item number four, but it's not highlighted specifically because Rob will be doing that anyway.
Yeah, I just didn't, because I think sometimes you get funding for one project and then takes away a lot of the funds.
No, as a matter of fact, we have several other recommendations under the DOT, including Fifth Avenue.
All right, anything else regarding the Oak Avenue Drainage Grant Application? Is there a motion on that?
Second.
Oh, a favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you go, next one.
Okay.
We're moving right along, we got a busy agenda.
Okay. Rob also explained to us about a problem with non-existing sidewalks on Midland Avenue. And when the DOT round is announced at the end of May, there is a program called Safe Routes to Schools, which includes sidewalk installation on heavily traveled roadways where the walking way for schoolchildren is dangerous. And I would suggest that you allow us to do an application under Safe Routes to Schools for your sidewalk problem on Midland Avenue.
Just to add on that, Alan and myself had a conversation just happened in January discussing Midland Avenue. County came in and Hilton paved the roadway. Curbs, they said was not their responsibility, sidewalks. So this estimate would then rip out the curbs, rip out all the sidewalks, and replace it from Midland Avenue to the surrounding border, and then try to hook in a grant because we're missing a stretch in front of the ministry.
And the grant, I'm sorry, Alan, the grant would also include curbs, sidewalks, and new handicap curb ramps.
Can plant?
Well, we could, if you want to do tree planting or...
Alan?
Yeah, those are two points I was going to make. I think there will be some tree planting to replace what has to come down to the sidewalk by the junior high school. And I know we looked at this...
Unless, Alan, unless we surface-handed around the trees, that would have been fine. Alan, how do you even come back and have the trees cut down?
It's up to the engineer. And then I just was wondering if you could touch on the administrative component on this because I think we looked at this grant several years ago, and there was something, there was administrative...
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right, Alan.
You had a police department, administration, I think the school district had to...
No.
Come up with some administrative educational programs.
No, we have Al Maoki to get through all of that paperwork. That's one of the reasons he's on board with us. It is a federal grant, and what Alan is telling you about is a nightmare package of paperwork. But the gentleman who works with us, who does these applications, wrote the application for the state of New Jersey.
Wrote the paper?
He wrote the paper. And he can do anything administratively that is needed, and that's all part of the payout for that, part of what we do.
Okay.
So you don't have to look at any more federal paperwork, Alan.
Johnny, appreciate that.
It sounds good, but I just don't know what I'm voting on here. There's nothing to see, there's nothing to look at.
We're not asking you to vote on this tonight. There is no resolution there.
So before we do end up voting on it, will we see like what it's going to look like and how it's going to make it safer for kids? Or anything like, any sort of...
We have no plans for that.
But will we have it before it gets voted on?
Well, really all you need is an estimate to get a grant started.
Do you want me to do this?
Please.
No, you won't see plans before you start. When you do an application for a grant for this type of project, it is a concept, and if you are approved, you can do anything with it that you want. As long as you spend it where you ask for it. So, if you are concerned about what the design will look like before an application, don't be, because if you get an approval, then you will sit down with your engineer and you will design it.
I know, but here's my follow-up. If I get the approval, then we owe you the money because we got the approval, but I may not like the design and would have never gone out for it, is my... I'd like to see what we're going to do, then go after the grant, and then pay the fees and all that stuff.
It doesn't work that way, because you would be spending a lot of money ahead of time before you actually know if you're getting a fund.
Well, at least I get an opinion on it from you to say this is a safe, this is what we need to do.
Johnny, the best thing to do is to go to Midland Avenue and try to walk without, try to walk on a sidewalk that's not there where the homeowner's residence pushes, push you into the street in close proximity to the school.
Now, I've walked it many times, and that's why I'm not sure what this is going to do.
It's a sidewalk.
It's not going to do much for you.
I mean, it's a sidewalk.
To have a sidewalk where you don't have to walk in the street?
I just, like I said, I'd want to see exactly what it's going to do for us, and how it's going to work, and how it's going to be safer before I actually vote to go get it. I'm not saying that, you know, it's not or...
It's falling off what Johnny's saying. You at least put a map together with the limits, right? Because to me, I'm on the same page as Johnny. If we're asking for $400,000 and we get $50,000 for the grant, we may not want to spend $350,000 now and may looking to phase that over several years. So I want to see what the limits are and see how much sidewalk we would get in a certain area, rather than saying we're going forward for a full $400,000 project, which we're not going to get $400,000 grant on, which I can guarantee we're not going to get $400,000 from the DOT into sidewalks.
First of all, that's not so.
Well, I know the ones that came out this year, and nobody got $400,000 for sidewalks.
Excuse me?
The Safe Transit came out, the biggest grant they gave was 200-something thousand.
That's not true. 360 Ramsey, it was out, and it was for sidewalks. And Glen Rock was 360 also. Now, if they're not municipal aid applications, and there was no list there, what you have...
The Safe Street, the Transit, there were three grants this year, 85, 215.
That's not the same thing.
I know, but the allocations for these programs have been cut significantly, as has the local aid. I did this every year, ma'am, I know the numbers too. I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just saying a $400,000 grant is very unusual from DOT, that's all I'm saying.
All right, and if you would...
And we don't want to commit ourselves to a big project if we're not going to admit any of the costs. Well, I have the estimate from Mr. Costa in front of us.
Okay. First of all, Safe Routes to Schools, if you ask for $250,000 and they decide that your application is worthy, you'll get the whole 250, because they don't fund a portion of a project on a safety issue. And this is federal funding, it doesn't meet the same criteria as the list you have in front of you. The three Safe Routes to Transit projects that are on your list are all ours. We're the only firm in Bergen County or Passaic that got our applications funded.
Yeah, well, they were Morris, Burlington, and Mercer Counties, the three groups.
And what I'm telling you is not some pie in the sky, because if I don't produce this for you, I don't get paid. So I'm not going to tell you anything that's...
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is we don't want to get into a position where we're going to get only a partial funding for a large-scale project.
They don't do that on this particular project. They may on a street, you know, if you...
Let me answer it. If you don't get enough money and you don't want to phase it, don't take it, that's it.
And you don't owe us anything.
If you're worried about us getting paid, only do it by...
That's what Johnny was going to ask. If it gets approved, but we don't take it, we don't owe the fees.
You don't owe us anything.
We're not going to be happy about it, but obviously...
Okay, I was under the impression that if we win the award, then we pay, then we owe them.
No, you pay when you start a project, so if you never start it, you don't owe us.
Okay. What does that application do?
That application is going to be announced at the end of May, and you will have six weeks to do your project.
Okay. I'll fire to that. Alan, based on our conversation, I actually, Alan, we need to talk to the county, it's going to run this past Kilkenny, Costley, and Fennby. I think they need to get on board, because it is a county road. So I'm going to try to see if we can somehow hook the county in on this, and then maybe, again, you just did the ramps, obviously you know what's going on with these ramps right now. The county's putting in, I think, $700,000 or $800,000 in order to redo a lot of these ramps. So maybe some of the funding can come out of there partially, and then maybe this and the Costley can get this done.
And because...
The limits that we're going to put in for is from basically Dunkin' Donuts, Kinda Mac Road to the Paramus border. And if they don't, again, I agree, I mean, my personal thing, I don't know if you're going to get $400,000, Marlene says she is.
I haven't seen it.
No, but I say, if you do, that's great.
And that's all I'm saying, if we get the $400,000, that's fine.
I don't want it from 1985, when I was a young engineer, while we might have...
Rob, you mean to Fifth? You don't mean to the Paramus border, you mean to Fifth?
To the Paramus border. Our problem is, they came in, they did the road, there's no curbs. Then you wanted me to certify that the curbs were there. There are no curbs.
Yeah, from Fifth.
There's either an inch and a half, there's no curbs, there's two inches, so it doesn't meet a county standard that Gary Askew has asked us to sign off on.
All right, so you want to replace those curbs to Paramus border, from Fifth to Paramus?
Do it correctly, or don't do, don't touch it. I mean, that would be my opinion. If you start doing just one section, God forbid somebody has an accident in another, will it not come back to you and say, well, why did you do that? Why did you do...
Well, it's always depends on the resources that we have, how we allocate.
Understood, good stuff. I think if you're going to do it, face, if you get the money, you base the project, then do it properly.
Well, those applications are now. If the council has concerns about the limits or the design, you have some time to discuss it, to look at it, to talk to Rob about what you'd like to have him present for you. I'm just telling you where there are places to go to fund the things that were presented to us as problems that you would like to resolve, and I'm trying to tell you that there are grants for these things. So, the place you would go for the Midland Avenue sidewalks is the Safe Streets to School Program. There are other DOT programs that you could put it in, but it's less likely to get funding. For instance, you could forego your street application this year and put the sidewalks in. Because Midland Avenue is heavily traveled, it will score, but it won't beat out a road project. So your chances of getting funding in the regular round for the sidewalks aren't as good as if you put them in a program specifically designed for children, the safety of children walking to school.
Paul?
Is this picking up Riverdale, that walk on Riverdale, on Midland Avenue, or is strictly just coming off Fifth going towards Paramus?
No, both sides.
Both sides.
Take the street, both sides of the street, curbs and sidewalks. And again, trees, you're probably going to have some trees cut down, you might have some retaining walls possibly that just push out of the right of way. I would say similar to what we did on Howland Avenue, the exception of middle of the pavement is the third option.
And again, all of those design factors are between you and your engineer. You just go and get the money.
I just want to clarify, because I understand John and Ed's point. You're basically saying that if you get us money, but we don't begin the project, we don't owe you money. But of course, we don't want to send you out to do things that we don't intend on doing.
Correct.
But you're basically saying that we have some wiggle room when it comes to looking at all of these different projects?
Yes.
All right, I think that's great to know.
Most of the time, for any application that we do, it's basically a cost estimate and a concept, and once you are approved, whatever the project is, you sit with your engineer and then design it.
Okay, but if we don't move forward, we're...
Our contract specifically says when you begin the financing of your construction or put capital funds together to begin your project, that's when we're paid. If you never do that, you're not paid because you didn't take the grant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But as a businessman, I would suggest try and be as faithful as possible to what you want to do so that, you know, it's been our wheels because...
No, that's unjust to you.
Exactly.
The next thing that Rob spoke to us about was the completion of the Kinda Mac Road Streetscape northerly. There are several portions from the T V Bank north to the Oro Del Borough Line which is not completed. And the plans have been completed for that portion, and Rob suggested that that's something you might be interested in. The Streetscape...
Can you give me my 75?
Yes, that's you. I'll look on. Yeah. I'm seeing all the...
The Streetscape program that was in effect for many years, which you were the beneficiary of several times, went away for a while, and now it's funded again. The funding specifically comes from the federal government, and they're probably going to solicit applications in the summer. So you have some time to think about that one as well. In the case of the Streetscape application, the engineering is all done, because it's just a matter of repeating the pattern for the section that we did. And I believe you have plans for that as well?
This morning, actually, I asked Scott to print that, what we did in the past. Remember Phase, I'm not sure who was on the council, who was, but back in 2000, probably five or 2004, Marlene, we started going for grants for the Streetscape, and we train stations north of the Oro Del border. We completed what's on the cover sheet is Phase One, which is the Lincoln Avenue just north of Bull Gardens Funeral Home, and then on the opposite side of the street. That's where the funding actually ran out. So if you look at this plan, Phase Three never got complete, there's a portion of Phase One that was never completed, and Phase Two was never completed by the train station up to Kinda Mac at the Y and the road. So, this was all put together, again, it was put together as Phase One, Two, and Three. You'd have to break it down, you'd probably have to break down a portion of Phase One out to try to redo some of the quantities and specs there. Phase Three would be ready to go almost immediately as Phase Two. So there might be a little bit of work to put these things together, and then, I'm not sure what you would need to leave, but I mean, for the most part, it was probably 90 percent complete throughout the day.
We would need a new cost estimate, and I would suggest that you put all the remaining pieces into one application.
Questions? Alan? Well, not so much a question, but I would ask the council, as you go through these projects and decide on what your priorities are, that you not look only at the grant aspect of this, but you take into consideration the total capital impact that we would have to absorb beyond the grant amount that might come to us, as well as the continuing operating costs that we will have to incur for years from now for projects like this. An example is those decorative lamps, which are beautiful, they enhance our community, but there is a cost to putting those decorative lamps up and keeping them lighted throughout the year. So that's an operating cost that we have to absorb each and every year beyond once this is constructed. But you, in the very end, will have to evaluate what benefit this has to the borough, to the community, to the business area, as well as the costs associated with it. I just ask that you look globally at this, not just at the improvement itself at this point in time.
Paul?
So basically, we get a grant for the work, as far as the continuing of the upkeep or the everyday cost, that goes back to the borough pocket, don't you say now?
Yes.
Okay, so is there any way we get a figure on that? Or a projection of what it would cost a year to run that?
We could talk to Superintendent Public Works and talk about his expenses, and we could come up with a lighting figure if we know how many decorative lamps are involved and...
I mean, it's one thing, it's one thing of putting, doing it again and done, and then shutting the lights off until we can pay for it.
Well, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But...
When we, when you design the Streetscape and you do the decorative lights, those are decorative only, right? You don't design them to be streetlights, so we can't turn off the streetlights, we have to keep both.
We don't have to, I mean, you could design them to be... We could design them to light the streetlights and then maybe turn off the poles.
So that's, that's a possibility.
I mean, the cheapest way to do this, and we had this conversation, guys, is to, similar to these sheets, they put the lights in, they're metering the electric, and they put in a meter box that's on their front lawn, and they're actually paying for the electric. It's a fraction of what public service is charging. And again, I know unfortunately, when you do the Streetscape, they lease those poles and lights. They maintain them, but the cost is tremendous. Public service is making a lot of money off of that contract. So maybe that's the way to get out of those contracts and put in a meter and energize them that way. It might save the borough a lot of money in the future. And this thing, I would recommend the same way, don't get them too involved in their program, Alan. You have to have a electrician, you know, contractor, if the light burns out, they replace the light. I mean, if a car hits it, I guess that would come out of insurance anyway. It's covered by insurance.
Okay.
Again, that's not something you need to make a decision about this evening. That program will probably announce in the summer.
But the plans have been around for a while now, 70 years.
I just looked on the council, I'm going to have to change that, because it's a different mayor, and everybody on there is all over the town, which is kind of interesting. That was back in 2006.
One of the other, one of the other things that Rob mentioned that the council was looking to fund is new field lights at Kenneth B. George Park. Bergen County Open Space will be announcing in about another month their program for this year, and you can file an application to the county or the cost of your lights. However, it's a 50-50 grant. It requires a 50 percent match for construction. The match can come either from the council recreation budget or from donations. There's no specificity as to where you get the match. So, that's a program that's tough. I was told you need lights.
Move your, I don't know.
I don't think it's on. Is there a switch on it? On the top, at the top?
Just tap it.
Tap it.
Tap it. Tap the front one.
It's on. Sorry about that.
Okay, so Al, you can bring that to the recreation, see if they want to take, have any comments on it.
Okay.
If they want to, if they have any money in their budget, because I don't think we do.
I'll take it to them. As far as I know, there's nowhere near enough money in their budget to cover the matching on that.
What was the cost of the lighting, like $300,000?
It was like $250,000 without engineering costs to go. Yeah, $250,000.
But this grant maxes out at $100,000, right?
Yeah.
I thought it says resection it up to $100,000.
It does. The grant portion, I guess, you're right.
So it wouldn't be a full 50 percent?
The max is a 250.
Okay. And that, and that grant will become, will become available in the summer?
You'll probably hear an announcement from the county middle of May.
Okay.
And then they give you two months to get it back. I think the last thing on my list is both the mayor and Rob talked to me about trees. And when I came to your council meeting last time we made our presentation, I talked to you about a free tree program. And I have to tell you that I was disappointed to learn that the program has been changed by the governor this year. And I brought along an application, and there's an application in your packet as well. It used to be that you filed a $100 registration fee, and you could go down and pick up trees. Now they've decided to charge $32,000... Now they've decided to charge thirty-two dollars a hundred. But it's still the cheapest game they can. And the application says that the season for their trees is until April first. But I called State Forestry last Friday. They told me they have trees left. If the Borough is interested in finding out what they have and purchasing some of these trees, they will gladly honor this year's prices until their stock is gone. Also attached to the package is a list of everything that's available. There are all sorts of hardwood trees, all sorts of flowering fruit trees, and the sizes that are available as well. These trees require that you have a Borough tree farm where you can replant them until they become street size or the size that you need. But when they announce that you can pick them up, there's only one or two days a week that you go to the state nursery with a Borough truck and pick up your order. The people who get there earliest in the morning get the largest trees. It's simply supply and demand. So if there are four foot tall trees and they open at seven o'clock and you want four foot tall trees, you be there at seven o'clock. And the tree order form is at the back of the package that we distributed to everybody. There are two other tree programs that still exist in New Jersey. Green Communities grant for 2012, but it's not funded and we don't know if it's gonna be. This gives up to twenty-five thousand dollars for tree planting, but you have to have a shade tree commission and they have to have done a Borough white study, a tree management study. I don't know if you've accomplished that yet.
We haven't.
We haven't.
You do. Okay, well then if this grant gets funded, you will in fact be eligible. And if you would like, I will keep watching this. And if the grant application shows up on the internet, I'll let you know immediately. And the other grant that's out there in New Jersey is called Community Forestry. And this is a little bit. Okay, sorry about that. It's called Community Forestry. And this is up to ten thousand dollars for replacing diseased trees throughout the Borough. For instance, if you have Dutch elm disease that's spread throughout some of your larger shade trees and you need to replace with larger stock, this is the grant that would help you. But again, not funded so far. So I think that I've explained everything that we've researched so far. And it's only a small amount of programs and projects. We do not yet know everything that you need. I would suggest perhaps, if there were other things that are on the top of your agenda, perhaps you could put together a wish list and give it to us so that we could research other areas for you.
Okay.
Okay? That's it?
Yeah, no, the only other thing that, that I had mentioned to you that you said that there's nothing available for would be to replace the emergency alert system.
Well, you know, that's interesting. Because AFG just announced federal grants and now we're finding that they will consider it. But they won't consider it just for one municipality. You have to have a joint mission with other municipalities. I happen to know that New Milford is having the same problem and perhaps one of the other towns that's your neighbor might consider doing this with you. And if you could put together a, a multi-municipality project, it might just fly. It's something to give some thought, maybe talk to your fire official today.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Just one clarification. I don't remember if I heard there's a day or a neighborhood, it wasn't right.
Yeah, it was voted on.
The Oak Avenue was voted on. The other ones, we're gonna, Alan's gotta get back to us on costs of the, of the Streetscape Phase Two and Three. And Rob Costa is going to get back to us on, on the scope of the Midland Avenue.
And again, you have time on all of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I would just like to pass the shade tree information off to the shade tree commission there for those who analysis and provide a recommendation.
We have somebody here from the YMCA, Mr. Duke.
This is an item from Waldwick besides football field. So Waldwick Soccer, Waldwick Football, Waldwick Cross Associations, funded a lot of it. So if you have associations like that, you might be able to help out.
I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to meet with you folks. My name is John Duke. I'm the Assistant Branch Director of the Ridgewood YMCA. And the Ridgewood YMCA is looking to expand programming into towns that they serve in what the NAF YMCA considers their service area, which River Edge is one of them. We're looking to provide programming for your town, other Ori Dele, Dumont, those kinds of areas around here who are a little farther away than from our general building in Ridgewood. I think one or two of you may even be members there and use the facility. We're looking to bring programming closer to your, to your town. I have been speaking to Bobby Conway and she and I were talking and it sounds like you have a very successful recreation program in the summer. What we would look, be looking to do is just maybe enhance that. I know it's a nine to twelve program. I don't know if parents are looking for anything beyond twelve o'clock. We could come in and do a sports program and maybe something later on in August. Your program ends in July, you also, then you have a sports camp in early August. It's just something to enhance your program. You have a very successful and, and it sounds to me like a really exciting program for your kids already. One of the things I was looking at possibility doing is, as far as camping is concerned, is a teen trip program. We run a teen trip program out of the Ridgewood YMCA for twelve to fifteen-year-olds. And what happens is the kids sign up for a week at a time and they go on a different day trip each day of the week. Jersey Shore, Mets games, water parks, things like that. That's something we could offer to, to the teens of Park of River Edge and other surrounding towns. It could be its own program. It could be a, a stop for a bus that originates from Ridgewood YMCA. That seems to be the best option for us since you guys do have a very significant and well job with the recreation program in the summer. The other thing that we could do going forward is the regular program catalog, the thicker of the two, we could offer, except for swimming, we could offer almost any program that's in that catalog in the town of River Edge. It could be an evening program, it could be a Saturday program, it could be a Sunday program. If we had the facility, we could offer it. I don't know what you, what your town does in the off.
Here's what we do.
Okay. Thanks. So this is, this is year-round programming? Okay. So it looks like you guys do a lot of good stuff, too. Basically, we're, we're, we just want you folks to know the Ridgewood Y is there, you are part of our service area, and we would like to offer our programming to you as much as possible. Use us for however you'd like to use us, whether it's making it easier for River Edge residents to get to the Y or come to the Y, use the facilities, or if it's something in catalog that you see that you might not offer in town that you'd like to offer to your residents and children.
Do people have to become members of the Y to partake in these programs?
They would become a member of the Ridgewood YMCA, yes.
What's the membership cost?
There's a basic program membership, which is fifty dollars. That's just for children or adults to take programs at the YMCA. It doesn't give them access to the swimming pool or the strength training facility, but it gives them the opportunity to take programming for, it's a year-long membership. There are other memberships that are more expensive depending what the, either individual or family would like to do.
Johnny? But just for the individual program, you don't have to be a member, do you? Just if you join up for one class or one profession?
You have to have at least a program membership, that fifty-dollar membership.
Is that a one-time or is that a yearly?
That's a yearly membership.
I don't remember. Okay. For the swimming, I didn't think that we paid that much.
Well, you might, do you have a family membership maybe? No?
No, it might have been on there in the first time. I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I asked you to come in. I think it's great. I think that, you know, if you find there's something that you can offer that we don't offer or something that maybe is difficult for, for us to offer that, you know, you guys can offer, you know, make it easier on Bobby or some of the other, or, you know, rec or whatever, you know, I think that's great. I mean, I just, I asked you here for, one, for everybody to hear what you had to offer, but also I didn't know exactly where to match you up, whether it be rec or if there's any other, you know, departments or anything that you see a better fit or another fit that you can, you can offer services to. So, so that's why I just asked you to come in and we can discuss.
It looks to me like I would probably fit best in with the rec department. As I said, not competing, I talked to Bobby, I said, you know, I, you know, I promised her I would not compete with her. That's not our, that's not the Ridgewood YMCA's goal. Our goal is to expand our service, services to the towns in our area that we may not be servicing as much as, as the towns would like us to. So we just want, you know, we're looking to enhance what you already offer to your, to your residents.
Right. All right.
Would you offer similar to what the Y, the Hackensack Y has?
Very much so. Yep. Each, each individual Y is different and independently run. They, and each YMCA has their, their own service area.
Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Just to clarify, your, River Edge is under your service area, not the Hackensack?
Right. It's right, I'm sure it's right on the border, but it's considered Ridgewood YMCA's service area.
Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have some Borough Administrator topics. And then we have budget amendment for the 2012 budget, the school tax payment schedule, and then moving down to number three, financial management policies. Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the budget amendment, we provided the mayor and council a memorandum explaining the need for the various changes in the budget document. The county Bergen and the local snow removal did not materialize at five thousand dollar level, so we're reducing that three thousand four hundred eighty dollars. We have vehicle expenses. Engine number three is going to require some work. Unfortunately, we had made a cut to that particular budget, not leaving enough money for this particular expense. So we need to increase that budget for those expenses. The defined contribution retirement program, we have several employees that will have to go into that, so that's a mandate of the state. We'll have to provide our employer's share out of that. As an offset to these changes, the Hackensack Primus sewer charges will be less than expected by the, by the same amount. So I don't anticipate that this budget amendment will affect any of the revenue levels that we have set previously or the amount of taxes to be raised. We'll have some appropriations go up and others will go down. We will require a hearing on this change so that the public can be heard at a September, excuse me, an April twenty-third meeting. By law, this has to be put out as a hearing to the public and advertised according to the statute. So there is a resolution scheduled for tonight that the mayor and council can consider.
Okay. Any questions? All right, moving right along.
Next item, Mayor, I believe, is the school tax payments for both River Edge Local and River Dele. I provided the mayor and council with a copy of those payment schedules. I've also done a projection as to the amount that would be paid through those payment schedules and how it would affect our operations at the end of the year. The River Edge schedule is basically the same, spreading out the general fund payments and the debt service. That's, that's fairly standard. The River Dele includes a twenty percent initial payment on August fifteenth, which is what we had last year. The effect is to make the first payment lower than the subsequent payments and put the balance into the second, third, and fourth quarters. You could, of course, return to, ask River Dele to return to the old schedule of taking the total and dividing by four, which would make the first payment an equal amount, but would make it a little bit tougher. The twenty percent comes from the statute, which I provided to the mayor and council, and it makes for the minimum payment that the Borough must provide. In either, either scenario, what I've shown here, and I reviewed this with a member of the auditing staff, as well as a certified finance officer who teaches the financial statement courses, that the amount of deferred school tax, the impact on our operations would be the same no matter whether you look at the twenty percent schedule or return to what our previous payment schedule was. I'm projecting it will, it will increase our surplus balance a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. The difference is that under the twenty percent schedule, we will show a payable due to the schools of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. If we return to the old schedule, the payable would be about a cent. So it's a different presentation. One other piece of information that I've given you is a historical look at our cash flow balances going back to 2006. And without spending a lot of time on all of this detail, which can be accomplished in finance committee, but what this shows generally is that if you go back to the 2006 schedule, which is on the very large sheet of paper, you'll see that when you add in the surplus that was on hand, you virtually didn't have any negative balances in terms of our cash flow for those months. As the surplus declined, the negative balances appeared, especially starting in 2008. We had to borrow some tax anticipation notes to provide the amount of cash flow required. Moving forward, we had several, we have several months that are in a negative position. And then in 2010, the number of months increases and using 2011 as a projection for 2012, the amount of surplus that we have on hand, we're looking at five months. In the later years, though, what you will see is that January or February becomes the month where we have had some significant problems. And that is why the schools, I guess sympathetically, have produced this twenty percent initial payment for us. Typically, we don't receive our state aid until after August and that comes to us on a sliding scale. It's about a million dollars. So it's a little bit easier the second half of the year because we get that cash. These schedules don't take into consideration any interfund amounts that they borrow temporarily to ease our cash flow or the fact that the schools in the last several years have worked very cooperatively with us in terms of an abbreviated partial payment schedule off of their, their schedule itself. And we have modified their schedule going back several years to make sure that those payments are made after the collection of our taxes or as close as we can get. So the decision is the council in terms of how, which schedule you want to go with for the schools, I believe, would want to return to the quarterly payment schedule because they get more money upfront. But they have indicated that they would work with us if we, if we would like to go another year with the twenty percent.
Paul?
Alan, what do you recommend?
I would recommend the twenty percent again this year. It will make it easier. It would make it easier going into the first part of the year and next year in 2013. And. and next year in two thousand and thirteen, and, you know, it doesn't make any difference to us in terms of the amount of surplus we realize. I think I've shown that, but cash flow wise, it probably would help until we are able to get into a better position.
May I just make a motion to vote for what Alan recommended?
Any other discussion?
Mayor, and just one other point I want, a positive thing, if you look at the two thousand and ten schedule and the two thousand and eleven schedule, the difference amount, the net difference for all months is decreasing. In two thousand and ten, it was two hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. In two thousand and eleven, it was one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight. So what that tells me is that your disbursements are being reduced, the amount we're spending is being reduced, the amount of revenue is either staying the same or increasing slightly, so it is putting us in a much better position than where we have been previously, even though surplus has been declining. This is a good indicator that that, that amount is shrinking.
Well, I know that it came as, came as a big surprise during the budget process that we owed the school system a lot of deferred taxes because we were, you know, we were kind of in the dark about this twenty percent thing up until the end of the budget, end of our regular budget season, when we were just about to introduce it. So now that we know, going, going into the budget year, that, that we're only going to give the, the minimum statutory payment of twenty percent initially, and the eighty percent over the course of the remaining months, I guess we're all informed, we can't say you didn't tell us.
I'd like to second Paul's motion.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Is it the Speaker of the House?
Yes.
Councilman Ford?
Yes.
Councilman Forts?
Yes.
Councilman Midgone?
Yes.
Councilman Bottomo?
Yes.
And Councilman Capoleiro?
Yes.
Okay. We have one more topic, Alan.
Yes, thank you. I was also asked to prepare some information on financial management policies. I provided the mayor and council with the literature that is available from the various rating agencies that are out there. Mayor, since there are a number of policies in a number of different areas, I would recommend that this be referred to the finance committee so that it can be studied in committee, and a recommendation can come out of that committee, back to the mayor and council with regard to some of these various policies. And I would schedule the finance committee to meet over the next several months so that this can be accomplished well in advance of the fall when we start our budget season.
Are there any, are there, do any, there aren't any citizens on the finance committee, right?
No.
No?
But that would not prevent you from appointing these citizens to this committee.
All right, well, is there any discussion or is there a motion to refer all of the, all of the budget management policies to the finance committee so that they can go through them all in detail and discuss them with our CFO and come up with a recommendation on how we can better budget things towards the future? I'll make that motion, but the finance committee will take it.
One second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good.
Mayor, would you like me to extend an invitation to the citizens who served on the budget committee to participate in this?
If there's any, if there's any interest, and you don't feel, Alan, that having citizens, having a citizen representative on the, on the finance committee to, to get input on these fiscal recommendations, that's fine. Any, any objection to that?
Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, I guess going back to the agenda, we have one item on the work session consent agenda, releasing a maintenance bond, the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents to Charles Springstead for nine-ten and nine-twelve Summit Avenue, block two oh-three, lot nine point zero one and nine point zero two. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I give a motion.
Second?
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm going to skip any mayor's report. We have council liaison reports coming up, so I don't know if any particular council member wants to give a report now.
No.
All right. We have, under new business in our work session, we have the borough attorney discussing a matter regarding the Huffman Coos property. Sam?
Yes, I received a call from Maura Blausch, who works at Greenbourn Road, represents the Sanci project. Basically, they made an application to the Economic Development Authority for what they call an economic redevelopment and growth application, a grant application. They had requested that, in support of that application, the mayor could sign a letter in support of the project to assist the system of securing the grant. You should have before you a copy of all the material that she had sent me, but I don't think, do you have a copy of this letter, the form of her letter? I don't think so.
No, we didn't.
I don't think you have it. You want to make, I could read it to you, it's rather simple. It just, it's addressed to Maura Blausch at Greenbourn Road. It says, Dear Ms. Blausch, as written over our letterhead, we are receipt of the enclosed letter to Matt Abraham of the Economic Development Authority, enclosing a draft application for the economic redevelopment and growth grant application submitted on behalf of Route Four Main Street LLC for the New Bridge Landing and River Edge redevelopment project. We understand the project will include construction of two commercial slash retail buildings and reconstruction refitting of an existing twelve thousand square foot commercial building, is the total line title, along with an environmental cleanup necessitated by impacts from the former site operator. For the reasons discussed-
Sam, can you talk into the microphone?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, for the reasons, for the reasons discussed below, myself and the borough council enthusiastically support and encourage the project and the EDA's approval of the ERG grant, which is clearly needed in order for the project to move forward. River Edge has long supported the project, as evidenced by the site plan approval that has been in place for the project for several years now. Moreover, while as detailed in the, in the ERG grant application in letter to Matt Abraham, the borough of River Edge has recognized for some time the need for redevelopment of the downtown area, and to our frustration, the economic downturn has hampered the implementation of the redevelopment goals described in River Edge's New Bridge Landing Center redevelopment plan. We not only welcome, but are grateful for the efforts and the vision of Route Four and taking the first shovel-ready step to move the, move these efforts forward. The economic value of this project to River Edge as well as to Bergen County and the state of New Jersey is clear from the numbers. They include, as described in the ERG grant and the letter to Mr. Abraham, Route Four and its consultant anticipated creation and/or retention of an estimated eighty-two permanent jobs and the generation of a new tax revenue in excess of thirty million dollars in the first ten years of the operation. Further, the location of the project within a few hundred feet of the Hackensack border and its proximity within walking distance of several NJ Transit train stations and bus stops provides the opportunity for the project and River Edge to play an important role as an integral vital commercial area linked to the larger Bergen County community. On a more visceral level, the site of the activity in this area in connection with the remediation work done to the date in this area has created an atmosphere of excitement and hope that in the, that in and of itself revitalizing and energizing River Edge. We look forward to building on that excitement, the actual project backed by the ERG grant. If you have any questions or require any information, feel free to contact my offices at, I can email this too if you want, and it can be put on the letterhead and then you can modify it to whatever extent necessary. They spent about three million dollars on remediation, according to the report, I don't know if you looked at it.
Yes, three million, one ninety-nine.
Yeah, so they spent a tremendous amount, just on remediation. It looks very promising, at least they're certainly taking at least the initial step to get this thing off the ground.
What happened if they don't get this grant? Are they saying they don't have finances for the project?
I don't think they're saying that. I think obviously if there's money available, I think, you know, basically you would exhaust that before you go to the private markets. So, I mean, it's my understanding that, you know, this type of grant would be the equivalent of like an SBA or an EDA type loan, which is bonded, so that I think essentially what you do, if this money is available, it's obviously probably available at less cost, and I think, you know, it's just, it's something you want to exhaust before you actually go to a private sector.
We don't know if this impacts them starting the new construction of the new Total Wine Building or any of that part?
You know what, I could talk to her tomorrow, she's back from vacation tomorrow, Tuesday, so I can give her a buzz and I could fill you in on that, to see whether this is a all or nothing type situation. I think given the amount of money they spent, I mean, they already spent three million dollars in the remediation aspect, I don't think they're going to just leave the property lay fouled. So in my opinion, it's definitely going to come to fruition, the question of how you finance it.
We are going to, going to our regular meeting, and then, and then we're going to go back into work session after our regular meeting starts, because we have to hear from Mr. Anzavino still, and appraisal company, and we have to go into closed sessions.
I'm going to ask a motion to the letters.
It's my, no one can sign a letter but me. And, believe me, I can write my own letters. All right, can we stand and have a moment silent prayer? And councilwoman Murphy lead us in a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go downstairs with you and Mr. Del Gercio, you can pull the appropriate property record card and, and discuss it individually. Does that sound like a good idea?
Mayor, I think, excuse me, Mayor, I think that's a great idea. You said, as you are aware, we've been here before, we've explained the whole process. Something I think that everybody may want, let me introduce Mr. Del Gercio. He's the president of Appraisal Systems. Appraisal Systems was a successful bidder in a joint bid for the different, freetown reassessment. He's done many of the same towns in Bergen County, many of the towns right in this particular area, so it's a good fit for the community. Just a couple little, you know, things to button up on. The deadline for the appeal process is, I know, first I know a couple of the council members, we have to make a, reschedule a meeting, that we can do that right after this meeting. The deadline now, I believe it's going to be May eighth, I'm waiting for confirmation from the county tax board. The postcards were sent out prior, so it's not the May first deadline, it should be May, according to my calculations, May ninth. I'm telling everybody May eighth, just so they kind of make sure that we meet that deadline.
Okay.
As you're aware, in order to be a successful appeal, it's based on market value. You cannot compare taxes, you cannot compare your neighbors' assessments, it's strictly what would your property sell for on October one of the pre-tax year, which in this case is October one, two thousand and twelve.
What?
Two thousand and eleven, excuse me. Sorry about that. I understand, and I'm also very thankful for the borough, because a two hundred and seventy pound guy needs to lose a little weight, so I appreciate us not turning on the air conditioner, save the taxpayers a few dollars. But I'm not, we made a presentation last month, I'm not sure exactly what direction I should have went into, but if we have any questions for Mr. Del Gercio or myself, please, we'd be happy to answer them. And I think we use such a good idea, we'll adjourn downstairs to meet one-on-one individually with any residents.
All right, any questions from the mayor and from the council? Kathleen?
I just have a specific property that I just want to show you. Just on Bogart, so you can see where the higher number is the resident that has the question, and the lower numbers are the neighbors. So they were wondering why their property was valued two hundred thousand more than their neighbors. So maybe, they're here in the audience today.
Yeah, it looks like you have the property record cards, I'm sure there's, you know, there's a very good explanation for it. You know, sometimes you have to lay things out, and you have to kind of look into it.
I mean, that's a big discrepancy.
Right, but this is a good example, Mayor, of something that, you know, should be discussed if they come down and talk with the assessor, and I'd be happy to go through it and answer that question, yeah. I mean, this is when we held our informal meetings, this is a sort of typical information that was exchanged, and we, we'd be happy to do that.
Seems there's like a lot of frustration with inaccuracies in the property cards, that people, you know, once they take a look, they have more square footage than what-
Can I address that? You know, I've been on seven questions about that, and on all seven, the measurements from the cards matched identical to the measurements of the house. One person says, no, 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 that's not how you measure. For his, he measured interior rooms, but he left out closets, hallways, he just did basically bedrooms. The way we measure is according to the state manual, and that's basically, basically the exterior of the homes. So out of those seven that I did-
Does the state manual have a foot equaling twelve inches?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, it's-
I wonder sometimes, you know, the state manual says it's really eleven and a half.
Well, ironically, if you ever looked under the land calculations at those-
Yeah, there's, there's only one way that we measure a house, and that's the same way that all houses are measured in the state of New Jersey, and that's by the outside dimensions, including the outside walls, rounded to the nearest foot. And the New Jersey state manual dictates that we do it that way, every municipality in the state of New Jersey requires we do it that way. The state is very particular about uniformity and within the standard of assessing, and by doing that, that includes obviously hallways, closets, a lot of dead space, and what we do is, we, when questioned about our, our square footage, we simply produce the property record card, we'd be happy to send that to, to anyone, Jim would be happy to print that out, and if you want to verify your square footage, you must do the calculations the same way that we do the calculations. If you do the calculations according to, according to the way that a lot of realtors or a lot of appraisers, other appraisers doing other assignments, you are most definitely going to come up with a different square footage. But we, we must stand by the way that we, we do our square footage. Another major discrepancy that we run into is a typical one and a half story Kate Cott. The New Jersey state manual requires that a one and a half story Kate Cott be measured at sixty percent on the second level of the first floor foot, when it's pretty flat. That will give you a much higher square footage than a bank appraiser who's going to come in and measure inside of the second level. Sometimes it's off by hundreds of square feet by doing it that way. I'm not saying that's the wrong way to do it, we do bank appraisals and we measure houses that way, that's what the banks require, for URAR standards, VANMAA and FRA standards. So, but again, the assessor and I have, have met and answered these questions about the square footage of the house, and if someone takes a copy of their property record card, and if they produce a sketch done by the same standard that we do the sketch, and there's a discrepancy, we make the change.
Johnny?
My concern is not so much on the individual houses, I mean, I understand that, you know, there's people doing it, and there could be an issue, I mean, human error, it's very possible, and that's why I think that there's this opportunity for people to question what's going on, and I think that's part of the process, and, but my concern was more on the whole town, and it seems like, you know, there was a lot of concern, so I just wanted to communicate that to you from the residents and kind of get a gauge of, you've done other towns similar to ours, has our town yielded a much different result than other towns that are similar to ours? So I know, Mr. Anzavino, when you were up here last time, you said a third will probably stay the same, a third will go down, a third will go up. That didn't happen here, and I'm just wondering, for the most part, why do you think that happened?
It depends on the makeup of the town. Well, let's just take the three towns that were included in the, in this contract. You had Dumont, you had River Edge, and you had Prescott. Does, a lot of uniformity in the housing stock in Dumont. There's not too big of a difference from one side of town to the other and everything in between relative to the, to the type of home and ultimately the market for those homes. What was the Dumont equalized ratio going into the reassessment? What was the Dumont equalized ratio going into the reassessment?
Not sure. It's around 97, 98%.
But when you have, you know, literally thousands of homes that are Cape Cod's or split levels, all relatively the same size and within the same market, then you're going to have, when you reassess, you're going to have much less shifts that exist between them. Now, you go over to Cresskill, and that's a different story. Cresskill saw a much greater degree of change, just simply based on so many different property types there, from the high-end to the entry level and everything in between. And then you have a town like this town, River Edge, that fell somewhere in between the two. So, were, did you experience the same shifts that Dumont experienced? No. Theirs were much, much less severe. Did you experience the same shifts that Cresskill did? No, you were less than a town like Cresskill.
Just because we had spoken about the old assessment or evaluation, but, and it seems like the way they did it last time potentially affected the results this time. So, I don't know if the residents got, you know, a good explanation as to that. People may not have spoken to you, so if you could explain that a little bit, what we talked about there.
Well, we had countless examples of a house that we've assessed, the same house, more or less, with slight differences. And we've assessed that house at, say, $450,000. And there was very close in assessed value that we put on, because it's more or less the same house. The problem is that if the house was assessed, if the one house was assessed for $250,000 before, and the one next to it was assessed for $150,000, there was no uniformity in the old assessments, then when the tax rate is struck based on our reassessment, two entirely different impacts to those two houses. One's taxes might go way up, one's taxes might go way down. So, when you're measuring uniformity, they, no, you're right, there's no uniformity in the tax impact.
And the course conversion.
But when you look at what we've done is we've equalized, we've done our job by assessing those two homes the same way. I have no control over where these assessments were in the past. I only have control over where these assessments are right now. And that was part of the problem in this town, is that there were a lot of homes that were not assessed, that the ratio, the overall town ratio was... Was 90%.
92.
Was 92%, but there was a lot of homes that were at, really at, say, 72%. There were a lot of homes that were at 102%. That's where the problem comes in. So, when you readjust that, you know, we're doing our job, and that's why the county board will hold that if you file the appeal, they're really interested in what the market value of the property is. If your taxes went up $1,000 as a result of that change, obviously, that's what happens when you do re-bow.
Last question if I can. How does that ratio of, you know, this mishmash of different valuations affect our old appeals? So, when somebody came to do an appeal, and you got somebody, you know, who's at 150, I'm at 250, so how did that affect those appeals?
Just to make it simple, let's say the value of the home is $100,000, and our ratios are 90%. Let's say somebody buys that home for $100,000. We have to prove the value's 110 in order to be successful. Now, the county has a corridor of 15%, but if it's a basic, but they also say you can't over-assess a property. So, that person buys for 100, and the ratio is 10% less, that, even though we have it assessed at 100, that assessment's going to be reduced to 90. Now, the way the ratio is struck is, and he's going to give you a little bit more detail on the times that we went down in the state about fighting this, it's a three-year aggregate sales analysis, based on July 1, 2008, to August, to June 30, 2011, which will produce the ratio for 2012. Now, as you can see, the market was totally different in those three months. The true ratio was, even our ratio was 92, was much higher. Like, we saw some sales that were lower, we saw some that were higher, over 100%. I think last year, we, I think we adjusted about 120 tax appeals.
So, you're saying that was, we were in a bad position because of that?
And the reason we did this, and I think I came three or four times last year, was because of, Mr. Negri and I had multiple conversations. I think as of, I'm going to say, May 1 last year, we probably had 120, 530 appeals. When we projected the amount of revenue that we were going to lose, we said we could do a reassessment. If you stretch the payments out over to five years, it'll be less than refunds we're giving back. And do you want to talk a little bit about the ratio, how it's the true value and...
Well, yeah, and when you have a down market, our job was to trend the values to October 1, 2011. And when you have a down market, your result of your reassessment or re-bow, which is trending to that fixed date, October 1, 2011, is always going to be shown. We're putting heavy emphasis on the most recent sales. And unfortunately, the state ratio program does not trend, and they use, they wait a sale on October 1, 2011 to the same degree as they wait a sale from two years prior. So, in a level market, the ratio program works fine. But in the down market, the ratio program, there's a lag built in so that the true ratio, as Jim said, is always going to be much different than the state ratio. But the problem was that the town had this ratio of at or near 100%. Based on that ratio, the director's ratio, but you were faced with defending appeals. The courts require that appeals be fought based on the most recent sales, not sales from a year, two years ago. It's somewhat unfair, an unfair burden on towns where they're being, you know, they're being held to this director's ratio, but then when it comes time to defend appeals, they have to defend based on only the most recent sales. And so, as a result of that, not just this town, but all the towns in the state are faced with the same dilemma. That's why most of them are doing reassessments in order to get out from under that.
A lot of people feel that you've artificially lowered the rate so that they have no chance to win an appeal?
You mean the tax rate?
The value.
Oh, the value. Well, you know, we analyzed, we analyzed 81 sales in 2011, and that's basically was the, our directive. We just took, we took the, we took the town down to the degree that those 81 sales, usable sales in 2011, you know, that's what we used. Rick, what was the percentage of nonusable sales? There weren't too many. I think there were maybe 81 usable sales, there's only maybe about a dozen nonusable sales. So, more than 10% were unusable? About 10%. About 15%. Isn't that, isn't that a little high? No, it's typical. That's typical? Yes. Shouldn't it be more around 2% to 4%? I mean, it's been higher in the down market, yeah, because obviously, in this environment, there's been more foreclosure, there's been more sheriff sales, so in a good market, it's much lower. If you're saying typical from '99 to 2006, yeah, there were very few nonusable sales. In the last three years, that's typical. All right. Remember with our questions that we have our state legislators here, so we have to have a presentation from them. Ed?
Just two questions. In theory, then, right now, if we took the new assessments, how should that compare to what the market value of the house should be right now? Should it be 100%? Is that what the goal is right now?
The goal is as of October 1, 2011, it should be about 100%.
Okay. So, if I'm looking at a snapshot of the last three months, and I'm seeing that the ratio of the sale prices to the old assessments versus the sales price to new assessments shifted 20%, does that make sense? For example, I'm just going to give a couple isolated examples, where, you know, there were a few, what caught me, there was a couple Sundays ago in the paper, they had one of these new listings, or a new sale, and the house was listed at, the old assessment was $499.
The old assessment or the old asking price?
The old assessment. The old assessment was $499. The new assessment was $385, and it sold for $420. We had one that was assessed at 400, it was assessed at 430, it sold for $530. Another one was at 436, they lowered it to 416, it sold for $480. 390 to 360, 445.
Let's just go back...
The ratios, what I'm saying, the ratios, if you go at the ratios before, the ratio of the sales price to the old assessments was .94. If you do that now, it's 1.1.
Yeah, take that 490, right?
Yeah.
499.
Yes.
Add 8% to that. That's 500,000, 600,000?
Mm-hmm.
That's what we would have had to prove. Now, what was the sale price?
420.
So, take 420, and take 8% less than that. 420 less 8% is another $38,000. That would have been, so that is...
So, it's not 1%. You're saying it's 80%. So, the new assessment is not what the sales price is?
No, 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 I'm just saying that's how it would have been.
No, let me answer this, Jim, because I've done dozens of reassessments in Bergen County the last several years, and it's a common question that comes up when people take two or three or four sales. The way, the way mass appraisal works is you really need to take the entire universe of sales, and you need to draw your conclusion based on that. Okay, so if you take the 81 sales that I used last year in order to determine market value, you could take the front 10, and you could take the back 10, and you can make an analysis that we were way off, because, you know, we can't hit every sale right on the nose. We have to, we have to work within the average. And so, within the average of those 81 sales, we had about a 5% coefficient deviation. So, you know, that's about as good as you can get, you know? And so, you know, before you judge, if you want to take every sale that takes place in 2012, okay, and gather them all together, and then do an analysis of the assessed value versus what they sold for, and then take all of those ratios and average them together, then you can come and you can ask me, well, okay, that average came to 80%. Of course, there's going to be outliers. There always is.
Well, I'm looking at significant outliers, that's what I'm saying. Now, we're saying houses that sold, say, for 436, which was on March 7, it's assessed at 345. So, now they're going to be paying taxes on the house that's assessed at 345. No?
As I said, because there's always going to be outliers. You cannot, you...
Then my question becomes, then, the second part of my question was, then what kind of quality control, quality assurance analysis do you do on your data to make sure that these are just outliers, and they're not indicative of a widespread problem with the whole data set?
Well, as I said, if you take the entire universe of sales that takes place, and you measure the assessed value to what they sold for, and you figure out the percent difference, and you take that entire universe of sales, you draw a conclusion based on that. I wouldn't draw a conclusion based on one or two or three or four sales.
I'm taking 25 sales that go back to just November.
How many sales are you looking at right now?
I'm looking at about 25 sales that go from March through the previous November.
And what are they averaging?
The average is set on the ratios. The average was, if you use the old assessment, it would have been 94%. If you look at the new one, it's 110%. So, now we had ratios, say, .8, 1.3, 1.1 before, you're looking at, conversely, right now, the 21 sales, 16 are more than 10% over the sale versus the new assessment. 16 are greater than 10%, some as high as 30% over...
The assessments are lower than the sale price or higher?
Lower than the sale price.
Oh.
Yes. So, what seems to me that some of these lower-end houses went down too low, and the middle price and the higher-priced houses seem to be assessed where they should be.
Right.
And now what we're seeing is these low houses, lower-end houses have lower assessments, but they're selling for what they were selling before the assessments were even changed.
Right. Well, again, keep in mind, though, that my job was to set the assessments as of that date, October 1, 2011. Now, what happens in 2012? You know, the market could be changing again in 2012 drastically from one area to the other. So, if you're going to, if you're going to judge this reassessment, you must judge the reassessment based on the 2011 sales versus the new assessment as of October 1, 2011. Quite frankly, that's how the county would judge it, quite frankly, that's how the state would judge it. If you want, if you see 2012 sales that are showing that we're, oh, my October 1, 2012, 10% too high or 10% too low, well, that's, then you have to, you have to look at doing another reassessment.
Do it in chapter 101.
But there's no statistical, like, you don't go through all the data set to see if certain houses fall where you thought they should be, because, you know, again, it's anecdotal, we don't have proof. But we, people come in and say, "My neighbor's house is identical to mine, 1950, whatever, colonial, same-size lot, same-size house, no additions, whatever, and this one's 40,000 assessed more than the one next door to it."
Yeah, we had that problem a lot, because...
But there's no, there's no process to go through the data to see if that's...
The prior revaluation had, as Rick just said before, had those two numbers, had two totally different numbers. So, now when we equalized them, neighbor A is very happy because his assessment went down. Neighbor B is not so happy because his assessment went up. Now, the same houses have the same assessment.
But we're saying, but we're being told they're not the same. That's...
You know, tell me, please. I mean, this...
This, just to get back to your report that you gave me, I mean, I had a couple minutes while we're talking to him through it. The first thing that I would do is, you have the property record cards, based on our measurements, as I described, for the subject property, but you don't have record cards for any of the others.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm not going to base a comparison based on this data right here, and I'm not sure where this data came from.
All right, but, Rick, that's an individual...
Right.
...assessment that you can discuss downstairs.
But the reason I'm bringing that up is to make...
You're only here to tell us about the process...
Right.
And the method that you used, and we have questions. You're going to, you're going to reschedule a meeting at the county board, right, for a delegation to go down, so that Ed hopefully can present his complete, complete analysis to them to see what, if anything, can be done.
Just one other question, going back to the process. How many different field inspectors do you use? What's their background? Are they using the same work of a checklist? How did each inspector do an individual assessment?
Yeah, well, they're very experienced field personnel that have been with me an average of four, five years. They all, they all do inspection by the same standard, literally have done thousands and thousands of homes each. You know, they've seen everything, they've done everything, especially in town, such as this. And so, you know, we're confident in the data. And again, getting back to this, if you're going to bring up, anyone who brings up this scenario where, well, my house is the same as this house, this house, and this house, why is it assessed more? The only way that can be answered is by taking the property record card of the subject, and then those three houses in question, laying them out on a table, and saying, "Okay, well, according to our notes, these three houses are smaller than yours." And then we take the discussion there. But short of that, you know, you really can't, you can't answer, it's just they're unfounded accusations until such time where you can put the facts on the table. And that's what Jimmy and I, you know, have been doing and have continued. All right. Thank you.
Just real quick, what was the total percentage loss of value in Dumont and Cresskill? River Edge saw a 12% value loss. What was the...
Dumont, I think, was about 20%, right? I think Dumont was 20, and Cresskill, I honestly don't know. I think actually Cresskill went up in value, because the last revaluation was about 2003, 2004, so since then, we're higher than what we were before. About 2%? Okay. And one other thing, though, very important when you go to the county, October 1, 2011 is the cutoff. So, train your sales back from October 1, October 2, 2010, to October 1, 2011, was quite honestly, and council will tell you that, they're not going to look at those sales.
But the numbers, the numbers, Mr....
The numbers, I mean, I'm not trying to, I don't, the last thing I want to do is fight with my boss. I'm just going to tell you that if you go there, Mr. Layton's going to see these sales, he's going to push them onto the side. He's going to want to know what it was as of October 1.
Could you just explain, there's been some discussion about the previous assessment putting more weight in property versus the building... putting more weight in property versus the building, and this assessment being slightly different. Is that true? Was there a greater percentage placed on the house versus the property? If so, why? And if that is true, is it consistent with state expectations, regulations, and standards?
Yeah, yeah. When we did revaluations in the public, as I call them, we did have to pump up the land values, because that was really the only way to hit sale prices. And it'd be people who were paying astronomical prices for very small homes in 2003, 2004, 2005. So when you had a really small Cape Cod selling for six hundred thousand dollars, it was based on the location, and we put that value into the land. I know a lot of the other firms did the same thing. Since that time, you know, that, since that decrease, you know, we've taken the values down, but that's where we've been heading it from, is the land.
And will some market value use a different course conversion of?
Well, that, and again, another firm did the original revaluation. Our reassessment was done differently than the last firm who did the revaluation.
So just a clarification, if I understand you correctly, there's not a standard that the state sets where you say this much is the property and this much is the house? It's instead a fluid ratio that is designed to help you get to true market value?
That's correct.
I understand. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have honored guests here. Johnny, quick, very quickly.
I just had a quick question, is the, all the people that came in to, you know, check on their results and were upset with their results, out of those people, how many were actually incorrect? How many, you know, did you guys have to look at and say, okay, we made a mistake? And how many would you say were incorrect on that?
Third of the people wanted their assessments increased.
It was, I don't have those numbers, I could certainly get those numbers for you, I don't have them here. Sometimes it's a product of homes that were never inspected on the interior, either this time or the time before, or whatever reason, and then they just had us back, so we would make some adjustments. But we found the data, you know, to be sound. And again, if there's any question, and I speak for the assessor, if there's any question about your square footage on your house, or the number of bathrooms that we put you down for, we'd be happy to do the inspection and/or we'd be happy to print out the property record card and ask to verify it that way.
Okay. You're going downstairs, and you'll meet with any resident who wants to talk about their appraisal individual.
I have to be called to come up for a closed session.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're honored to have here our Senator Bob Gordon and our Assemblyman, Tim Eustace, who are going to make a presentation. Let's adjourn the work session and go back into the public meeting.
So by making the four footers lower, we will be better served during the first half of the year rather than trying to have one payment, make that lower for...
Alan, if we're going to do that, we have a motion and a second. We have to vote against the motion and second to close.
We have a motion to reconsider, and then you can vote.
Yeah, but we have a motion now to close the session. So we have...
We're back in it. We're back in work session. Keep the door open?
We are.
We're still in work session.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion for reconsideration to have four equal payments to the square.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
So there's a motion on the motion?
I just have a question, which is, I thought that the first payment was in April.
Kathleen?
I thought that the twenty percent payment is in April.
Leave it open.
Twelve percent is August 15.
Ah, okay. That's following you. Okay, I get it, I get it. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion. Let's have a roll call.
She doesn't know what you're calling her about.
Abstain.
I'll abstain. I don't know.
Just for, yes.
Why do that?
Because I'm asking.
Just abstain. It's okay.
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, now can I have a motion to go into closed session?
You want to...
To exclude the public?
Do new business real quick? I'll make the motion on the special events committee, because we talked about it.
All right.
So I'll make it now.
Yeah, we talked about it. You want to make the motion?
I'd make the motion that the Fourth of July committee be altered into a special events committee. And I'd make a recommendation, and we can try and flush this out, that it be comprised of two council persons, the recreation director, and seven residents. So it's ten people total to be appointed by, the seven residents to be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of council.
Is there a second?
Why seven?
Gives you town people.
But why'd you pick seven?
Because it gives you ten people with the two council people and the recreation director. I thought it's a nice even number.
It's typical, too. It was only like nine.
You want an odd number?
I was going to suggest...
Eight residents.
You don't know.
All right.
Yeah, I mean...
Any discussion? The only comment I have, and this could be worked into my appointments, is that since we have so many different public events, now we have one sponsored by the Women's Club, one sponsored by the, what was it, the Lions, one sponsored by the Cultural Center, that I think that the seven members...
Eight members.
Eight members should be made up from, you know, like, one member of the Cultural Center, one member of the Junior Women's Club, so that...
I mean, if you want to designate specific groups, I mean, right now, we have a member of the Knights of Columbus, we have a member of the Cultural Center, the Hibernians...
Are there people that have already said they're going to do this?
Well, we're on the Fourth of July committee now. I mean, you have a member of the Knights, you have a member of the Hibernians...
He wants representation from every group, it seems like.
No, I want representation from the groups that now hold special events, so that when the rest of the committee works on their event, they're included. So...
How many events are there? There's only eight people.
We counted about ten to twelve.
So there goes that.
But some are cross, some are double, with people doing double duty on different events.
But that's the idea.
Yeah.
Okay?
Sure.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining?
Sam, direct. Play it against him.
All right, now we have the motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Abstain.
(laughing) I abstain.